Number 2138. And again, the comments about the opening statement on the public hearing are in order. And I'm asking the corporate officer to confirm that all the process is following the Local Government Act.
Yes, Your Worship, I did receive one submission from the public. An AP lecture requesting that staff revisit this rezon prior to adoption.
So we're here for zoning amendment by law number 2138. This is for residential zoning. And looking for comments from the public. Is there any comments or questions from council? Counselor Nixon.
Just a question for staff. For Mr. Strachan, just related to the letter received and what that means for this rezoning of the lot.
My Worship, the letter submitted indicates that there's concern with platifications that are taking place as a result of the new proposed zoning districts. The indication is concern related to the 50 by 100 watt grid that we have in both the Heritage District of Rebelstoke, which is just to the south east of, or west, speaking of downtown, as well as we have that historical 50 by 100, 25 by 100 original grid in the Farwell area, well, a portion of the Farwell area of Rebelstoke. And the concern being that this change, or the R2 zone, which applies to these areas, would impact those 50 by 100 lots. Under the current zoning, it doesn't carry a regulation in either the R2 or the R2A for single-family development. It instead refers back to the R1, which is the zoning district for Arrow Heights, for example, a portion of Clumbe Park. So what it's doing is impacting the overall fabric by inserting another zoning district's fabric into this district. The intent of this district was to create duplex lots. And as a result of being, inserting the R1 zoning into it, when single-family development takes place, it won't carry that duplex while that is intended. That isn't going to occur anyways. As the fabric is a 50 by 100 fabric, none of these lots have the ability to meet the subdivision regulation at this time, which is 550 square meters, which is just under 6,000 square feet. So that fabric isn't representing what's in zoning right now. However, the zoning for duplex at 750 is in that zoning district and we propose to carry it forward. So that we don't create fabric moving forward that doesn't reflect what the intent of the zoning district was, which is to allow for duplex lots to be created. The new zoning will allow for two single families to impair on a lot at 750 square meters, as well as duplex components, so that flexibility of power meter is incorporated. The intent at this point is not to make a wholesale change to zones of properties. In this particular case, there wasn't any regulations in place, only valid regulations to reflect what's already in that zoning district. It was intentional, and certainly something we wrestled with. The zones in Rebelstoke are somewhat almost backwards in that we've got our highest density zoning district in our largest parcel areas, and then our lower density zoning district appearing in our smallest parcel areas. So there's going to need to be a wholesale review, and that process is announced through the OCP review. And likely, although these zoning districts are being developed now, they're going to change in their location as a result of that review. And realistically, we need to look at zoning in these areas independent of each other. We need to go through a neighborhood planning process. We need to look at these Southside neighborhood in its own context. Look at the Heritage District in its own context. Looks at Farwell in its own context. Same with Clumbe Park, Big Eddie. These neighborhoods have a very independent development format, but they also have a very independent fabric of existing parcels that need to be considered. Weave out a blanket for R2, R2A and just applies a big wide brush rate across the city, right? It's almost 85% of our residential lots that carry that zoning. So yes, these proposed regulations were intentional. They are reflective of what's in the R2 and the R2A at this time for duplex lots. It was the intention of these zones to do exactly that back in the time it was created. It was likely in a time when Rebelstoke was ordered to do something similar now, when there was a housing crunch. And unfortunately, the choice was to simply insert duplex and say, well, bang, you've got a bunch of opportunity for density, without looking at the fabric and what the regulations would actually result in. And we've seen the result. There isn't very many duplexes that have been created in the outside of rezoning to R3 or R4 to allow for multifamily. So this is an interim measure. There's going to be more measures that come forward after the OCP review. There is a necessity for extensive community consultation before we begin that process. I know there's been requests to me from several agencies to look at making the fabric more fine and going to 25 by 100 and allowing for 50 by 100. But this is not the process that we propose to do that with. We were quite clear when we started, we're not going to wholesale change how the community works for development. And that's going to come after the OCP review, if it comes, after people have the opportunity. After they have the opportunity to review these types of changes in the context of the whole community, not just a specific development. So that's where we're at. The indication that these may impact to mortgage or to insurance is not applicable. These are subdivision regulations. So if you have an existing 50 by 100 lot, the house owner, this does not impact you at all. You have an existing legally known performing lot. It's only for subdivision, these regulations. And we added that word into the zoning district to help people navigate that a little bit better. Because we give that question a lot. My lot isn't big enough to exist. What does that mean? Well, it doesn't really mean anything, because your lot exists, your home exists. You would be permitted to rebuild a home on that lot. You wouldn't be precluded from building a new multifamily on that lot. So if for some calamity you lose your home and there's a fire, your insurance would cover you. Build a new home and there would be no issue with that from the city. You would need to meet the setback provisions of the zoning district. And for some properties, that would be a challenge, because there's some very small tight lots in town. But you would not, your property would not become sterilized, nevermind the concern. And that becomes a big concern when you're dealing with mortgagers, or more specifically with insurance companies. If they want to, you can rebuild your home on that property, or else you're insured to rebuild somewhere else on a different block, because that lot's going to sterilize. And that is not the case with this particular regulation change. Thank you, Worship.
And just to clarify, you talked about existing house and burning down and things like that. But if somebody had a 50 by 100 foot lot downtown, and it's an infill lot, there's nothing on it, they could build a house on that lot? You know, our...
Your Worship, if they even have a 25 by 100 block, they could build on that lot if they need the setback regulations. The challenge when you get to those very small lots is to be able to reason with the size of how it works for you on a very, very small lot.
But downtown is like, it's five feet on each side, right?
Yeah.
Five foot setback. And then you've got the regulation of building coverage of up to 40% would be the maximum that you could cover a lot.
That's correct, Your Worship. So if they were to develop those lots, this regulation would preclude someone from developing an existing parcel. And they would likely face challenges with setbacks, but they could seek a variance from council for those setbacks. And council considered those contexts with mayors.
Okay. All right. Because I know that we've, in previously being mayor, we've dealt at this table on, like there was the skinny house by the courthouse, and then right across the street from Alpine Motel, there was a skinny house with a corrugated siding on it that... But it, and that was, one of them was a 25 foot lot. And you know, I know there was a little bit of a go around to get it approved, but it was approved. But the bottom line is, people that have these infill lots, and we want to encourage people, if they want to be doing something, that we want to be able to clear the way so they can actually build something. It's setbacks and coverages where the big issue would be, or any issue would be.
My Worship, hopefully through the OCP review process, certainly as a planner, it would support that form of soft, it's called soft densification, and the fact that it's using the existing community's parcel fabric to add more density. And there's, you know, we've talked about affordability of homes, and there's a number of ways to make housing more affordable. One is to have subsidized housing, where there's cover with money that's inserted into the process to offset the construction costs to result in units that are lower price. Or there's private market insertion, which is going to deal with the 95% of our housing issue is going to be amplified by the private marketplace. And for the private marketplace, it's a square footage cost for construction. So you've got one of two choices. You either reduce the cost of square footage construction, which is getting harder and harder, particularly with the building code becoming stronger and stronger, or you reduce the amount of square footage you built. And this is that opportunity that the council has alluded to and the mayor's alluded to with these 25 by 100 lots. You just build less square feet. If the cost is so many dollars per square feet, you build a smaller house. And that awaits for affordability. But is that something that's going to get affected by the community everywhere? And at this point, this zoning district applies such a broad brush that I'm not certain it would be a good option for council to move forward with something like that without having extensive community consultation. And the form of it would likely be different in various areas of the community, including the Heritage District versus Farwell versus Southside. And the opportunities that are in those locations are different as well. So there is that neighborhood planning process. We propose to begin that process immediately after the OCP review. And out of that will come zoning districts that make sense for these different neighborhoods. Right now, we're just trying to get the bones and skeletons of something that works, so we can start adding meat to it after the OCP discussion.
I just want to make sure that if somebody had an infill lot 25 or 50 foot wide, that they could do something with that property if they wanted to. And the answer is yes, they can.
Yes, Your Worship. We wouldn't be able to create those lots.
Right. And I could see the reason for that. And unless it's going through a whole OCP review, which is what's going to be coming up. Okay. We are at public hearing, and I'm looking forward to any comments from the public on this zoning amendment by law. What was the number of it again? 2138. This is for residential zoning. Any comment from the public for a second time? Comments or questions from council? Going back to the public for a third and final time. Are there any comments or questions from council? I mean, from the public, sorry. Seeing none, looking for a motion to adjourn this public hearing. Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. All those in favor? Motion is carried.
Your Worship, I'll bring forward that zoning amendment by law number 2138 be read a third time.
motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Sauls. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Motion is carried.
And Your Worship, that zoning amendment by law number 2138 be adopted.
motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Motion is carried. And that concludes all of the public hearings today. And... Sorry? I wasn't going to, because we had people waiting, but I don't have a problem taking a couple minute break. I figure I'm the only one in the room that really needs a break, but we're taking three minute break.
Change that clause to something six.
Yeah. What time is it now?
Five o'clock.
Is it really? Do you want to... I just need to know if it's a...
Really?
I thought we did three hours too.
We did do three hours.
Felt like it, eh? No, we didn't.
That's even worse to see.
We did two.
I'm going to do three.
But you don't want to create flush housing. For... It's a shame, because this is... 20 to 25% of your... You're using more...
Something's got to be...
It makes sense. You're doing really hard. It's a research study. You've got to give a chance. Especially for the...
Yeah. My Worship, if you know what it's like, I can be legal to hear this.
Yeah. No, I get it. Thanks, Steve.
Oh, that's my curiosity. Good to be in this meeting. And next on the agenda is announcements from the mayor and all the real brief. Want to thank and congratulate Keith Bradhill on over 25 years of service with the city, who has retired. And want to pass on my congratulations to all of the nominees and winners of the Chamber of Commerce Business Excellence Awards that were held on Saturday evening. Happy to be there with a few of our counselors. And just remind everybody, remember it today is on Friday. And yes, and that's everything. Looking for a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of October 25th. Counselor English, Counselor Nixon. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Is there any business arising from those minutes? Anybody would like to bring up? Items of old business. We have a presentation with Telus in their pole top wireless installation. Are we already... Yes.
My Worship, I can give you that.
Very good.
So there is a recommendation. We'll let Telus do their presentation first. We have Chad Marlet from Cypress Land Services, who are agents for Telus. And Cypress Land Services works on these sort of installations around apartments. Because the city doesn't have a specific policy or bylaw on the process for approval of these sort of installations, we follow federal guidelines. And so Chad, I'll hand over to Chad, and he'll introduce himself and the installation that we're talking about. After that, My Worship, perhaps the recommendation could be considered.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, you're open for it.
Good afternoon, Your Worship, and council members. My name is Chad Marlet, and I'm here to represent Telus. And this is, as discussed, is a sort of province-wide project that Telus is working on to improve wireless service throughout communities. There is a motion in front of you, we're looking for support to move ahead and improve the installation. So I'm just going to run through this quickly, since I've been here a while. Just go over some overviews of the wireless industry, the installation itself, the proposal. This is plural from a previous presentation, but there's only one location here in a map of it. And just to summarize, the consultation process that did take place and sent to the project. So more and more wireless is becoming quite important to most communities and most community members. It's largely, there's been a strain on wireless networks throughout British Columbia, not just Rebelstoke. But, and this is largely because more and more people are using networks for data services, like smartphones, such as the iPhone, and some people that still use Blackberry. And it's becoming more and more that people want it as a basic utility at their home. And part of this program is basically to improve service in buildings within communities, so people can use phones at home. About half of the households out there now don't have wirelines anymore, so it's very important that they have good wireless service. It's obviously an important part of a community's emergency network. 70% of all 911 calls are made from wireless devices, so it's a key component of that. And without adding new wireless infrastructure, there's really no other way to improve service. You can't just add more equipment onto existing cell sites. As they get, as networks get busier, those cell sites and the area they cover basically shrink out. So you've got to add new cell sites. So this is a province-wide project. In the lower right-hand corner is an image of a work proposing install on Fourth Street here in Rebelstoke. That's just an example from another community. There's about 35 of these right now that are being proposed around the province. Most of them are already approved and will be going to be installed. It's basically taking an existing utility pole and replacing it with a utility pole that's higher. In this case, I think the utility pole's about half the height. It's a bit of an odd situation, but there's a short pole and the two large poles, which I was just down there today and it's been replaced by Hydro already. But basically, it'll have three antennas on the top of the pole, and then near the bottom of the pole, about 10 feet or 12 feet off the ground, will be some equipment that operates the antennas on top of the pole. It'll provide service to about 300 to 500 meters around. This installation, it's not a high-powered cell site that's a big tower or anything like that. It's to service a very small area within the community. So it's going to service about 300 to 500 blocks around this installation. The work will be done by Hydro and by Telus crews, depending upon where it is. And in this instance, we did do, we are regulated by Health Canada. The site has to comply for safety standards to ensure public safety. They set guidelines about how much RF energy can be emitted from these installations. This installation to the nearest building is 0.17% of what's allowed. So less than 1% on Sixth Street overall. The location, because of the middle of the map here, just on Fourth Street right there, along the, I guess it would be the east side of the street, right next to the parking area of the Southside Market. So previous, I don't know if people pay attention to the poles in town, the wood poles, but there was a shorter Telus utility pole there that's still there. And BC Hydro's come along and added another larger pole right beside it. So the installation will basically be going on top of that pole. It's going to be relatively the same height of the other poles within it. Go ahead.
So Chad, so the question that I have is that you're saying that the pole that was there, it's a bit of an anomaly that it's a smaller one.
Yeah.
And the two on either side of that pole were a regular height?
Yes.
So what would that height be in comparison to what you're proposing of the regular pole?
The regular pole height is about three meters lower than what we're going to replace it with. So the replacement pole will be about 18 and a half meters.
Or three meters higher than the two poles?
Than the two poles on either side, exactly. There has to be a separation from the Hydro lines to the antennas of a couple of meters. So that's what it'll be. It'll be essentially three meters higher than the two poles on either side.
Okay.
So it's basically, I'll get to, the coverage of this is down the red circle, down in the bottom right-hand corner of the map. That's the area that it's going to improve. The area of green, so in this map, this is, I'll call it greater Revelstoke, but the green is areas of optimal sort of wireless service, where you're getting good infilling service. Areas of poor, or sorry, purple are poor areas of service. Not necessarily, you're going to get signal, and you're going to be able to use your phones, but you might not be able to use them in your house, in your business, or something, as effectively as in the green areas. So as you can see, it is a pretty small area that's going to be improved. Like I said, about three or four blocks around the installation. We did do some consultation, and Michael referred to this. Industry Canada has been renamed, but they do regulate the industry. And when a community does not have a consultation process, they have a process whereby we're required to notify everybody within three times the height of the installation and then provide those comments back to staff and local government. And then we do look for councils such as yourself to grant us concurrence or an approval to move ahead and do the installation. Okay? It's basically because the federal government values your input as local stakeholders, local decision makers. So we did do this consultation process. I think we notified something like 12 properties in and around here. We started the consultation in spring, I think. A colleague of mine from Telus reached out and agreed to my call, and did some pre-consultation about the pole that we're going to select. Then we formally started the consultation in July. Did notifications in July, and the end date for comments was August 27. We got a couple of comments. They were about the visibility of the installation and the health and safety of the installation, and those responded. And I think they're probably in Michael's report. Here's basically what the installation will look like after it's installed. It's the pole that's been replaced. Hydro's added some other lines to the top of the pole. So it will, there'll be a bit more Hydro equipment on this pole, but the antennas are located at the top of the pole. And as you can see, the pole's slightly higher than the pole in the background. And in the lower picture, there is the existing smaller utility wood pole that's still there today. It will be replaced and cut over to the Hydro pole that's been installed. Okay? This is the site profile and plan. So on the left is the profile of the tower. So you've got some equipment at the base, the antennas at the top. All the lines will be reattached back to the poles. And the shorter pole to the, on the far left, that's the existing pole, just for some perspective on this. All of the equipment is installed in the public right-of-way, not amidst on private property, and everything is on the, nothing is on the ground at all. And that's about it, so. I hope that was clear enough, but tapping in to...
Counselor Brothers.
Just a question. Why is the improvement area so small? And does that mean we need another pole somewhere else at some point in time?
Yeah, that's a good question. There are three towers servicing Rebelstoke now. There's one coming in on the highway, the highway to the kids, sort of at the top of the range over here, and then one in the middle of town. This one will, like, it does look small, and that green area really did look small. It will improve things beyond that, but just to a lesser degree. So it's really just to fill that one little area. But I think down the road, there will be some other improvements being proposed by Telus, smaller scale like this. But they'd like to start with this one, as this is maybe the biggest area of concern they have. Maybe an area they get the most complaints right now for. So, yeah.
Comments? Counselor Nixon.
So there's no encroachment on Southside's property to this?
No, that's right, yeah. I'm also interested in here, if you have other areas that you think require improved service, Telus is always interested to hear about those areas. So even if you want to feed them through Mr. Thomas at the end of the day, you know, that's always good information for Telus to have as well.
Counselor Nixon.
Just further to mention that you, how is the coverage on the north pole now from our bar?
Will the tower reach that bar to the resort?
To the resort?
You said it was only through the...
Yeah.
No? I don't know. It's, on the south side, it's, it depends on Eagle and the bridge or not.
It wants to drop down the bridge here.
Yeah, as soon as you get over the top, it goes, and the top of the pondalat goes to...
So further to that, I would be going to check this search and rescue, just seeing where they're missing the coverage on that one.
Okay. Good sir. Comment that staff will take into consideration. Counselor Wendell.
However it is, it can be, can't wait to end the conversation.
Getting the pole fixed here.
Any other comments from council? Mr. Thomas, you have something you want to add to this?
Oh, Your Worship, just to follow up with Chad's comment about other sites. Telus did approach staff with several other sites. This was at least six months ago. And we talked through some of the sites. Some of them were within municipal highways, right-of-ways, and just some different issues there. So Telus ended up focusing on this installation. But I'm sure we will see requests for other installations.
Counselor Wendell.
My Worship, just a question on, on a more serious note. In the past, I've commented on whether or not the infrastructure is the most aesthetically pleasing as possible. Are there other better-looking poles? Or have other municipalities requested, or have they stated policies whereby they have something that forms the same function, but just is a little easier on the left?
Yeah, I mean, there are other things that have been considered in other municipalities. With this program, know everybody that we've worked with, and it's been probably about 15 communities. This is the design. I think the idea is that you have existing above-ground utility poles, or just utilizing those to tack the tags on the top. So it's, well, it is going to make the pole a little more visible. That pole exists now, so we're just really co-locating infrastructure on existing infrastructure out there. So that's the rationale, yeah.
My Worship, I may just ask a follow-up question. What are some of, what are the things that other communities are doing in this instance? For example, if the communities already have above-ground telecommunications infrastructure. I know it's not appropriate for Rebelstoke, but I've seen in LA, they have like palm trees and stuff like that.
Yeah, when we go, you know...
Fake palm trees.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When we do... When we go build, purpose-built infrastructure, now to utilize existing infrastructure in this case, usually in British Columbia, we've been doing sort of, you call them stealth poles, so maybe a steel pole essentially with a fiberglass cap on the top, and everything's contained within the pole, so you don't see any equipment or anything like this. It looks like a, like a utility pole, that's steel, that stands alone. That's really what we focus on, we often build trees out here that, like palm trees. There's the odd monopine that's been done that looked pretty bad, but they're usually, cedar trees are quite large in British Columbia, so building a big structure like that, what you think, things on it, is very difficult to do.
So one of the cell towers is on top of the Telus building downtown?
Yeah.
And, you know, I imagine in your mind of work that you get a lot of opposition from a lot of people that, you know, it's not, I don't want it in my backyard, I don't want it, whatever the reason is. And I would assume that you're always looking to mitigate any opposition prior to putting it in, so you say, you know what, this is going to, this will work for us, and we're not going to get a lot of opposition because of the surroundings, or be able to get against the hillside, putting it on top of an existing commercial building, like, things like that. So I'm assuming that other options were looked at, and this is what we decided to come up with.
Yeah, exactly. And we did, as Michael pointed out, we did look at a lot of other poles as well. This pole in particular, picked was, you know, it was a shorter pole, could be replaced with a taller pole that's, you know, comparable height to the two existing poles. We didn't want to do some, the other options were doing something by the school, that was, been torn down, but I don't think Telus knew what other time, but they typically stay away from any school setting, even if the school wasn't in operation, if it was future operation or something like that. And then we try to stay away. The other pole options were out in front of people's homes, so we didn't, and we typically tried to stay away from that as fast as possible. That's why we located it next to the parking area of the store.
Okay, so we're at motion time?
Yes.
Counselor Solz.
Your Worship, offering forward a motion that council received PM Law's Telus application for the installation of a 1850 meter joint-use BC Hydro-Telus utility pole. The pole caught wireless telecommunications installation within the city's road right-of-way on Fourth Street, adjacent to 904th Street East, near South Side. And that council authorizes staff to issue a letter of concurrence to Telus stating that Telus has satisfactorily completed its consultation with the city, and no further consultation is required. And on further, that the city of Revelstoke concurs to a Telus proposal to construct a wireless telecommunications installation provided is constructed substantially in accordance with the plans submitted to it and described as BC 740 coordinates 50990561-188.1868.
Motion by Counselor Solz, seconded by Counselor English. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Motion's carried. Moving into, thanks, Judge, moving into ready business. Administration. Counselor Brothers.
Um, because of Mike here, Your Worship, and I'm not too sure, that the terms of reference of the tax steering committee be approved, and that staff advertise with committee membership, and that Counselor Orlando be appointed the tax steering committee as the council representative.
Moved by Counselor Brothers, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Discussion on the motion. Yes.
I'd be happy to sit on the tax steering committee. As you know, I was on the task force, and I've sat down with a great group of volunteers and staff members, and we managed to come up with our strategy, and attracted $1,000 in provincial funding, as well as some funding from the regional district, to the $20,000, and I'm really looking forward to moving forward on this steering committee, as they oversee the applicant who is ultimately successful for the position, which is the applicant that has been closed, and that will be selected, I assume, shortly. So, yeah.
Sounds like an excellent campaign speech. We'll see how it works out. Any other comments on the motion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to thank Counselor Orlando for continuing on.
Thanks.
Campaign manager? All those in favor? Motion's carried. And also administration.
Your Worship, please go forward.
We go forward on this, and if there may be conflict, it's on the charge of emergency social services, so I'm just going to step on it at this point.
With that, Your Worship, the Counselor Trevor English be appointed to the Revelstoke Area Emergency Management Program executive.
Moved by Counselor Brothers, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Discussion on the motion.
I'm not going to accept that appointment. I feel like we have a better counselor who's just stepped outside that fits this quite perfectly, and I'd like to nominate Counselor Solz.
Your Worship, that'd be a great suggestion, be a good representative, but he's under contract to provide emergency social services with the Revelstoke Area Emergency Program, so you can't.
You can't do it. Okay.
Again, an excellent campaign speech, Judge. Okay. Any other comments, questions?
You're automatically on it, Your Worship.
Should I give a speech? Yeah.
It hasn't been for a couple of years, so it shouldn't be too long, but there's been updates to the emergency program, and so it's probably appropriate that the committee be convened sometimes to handle that.
I, I can do it.
You okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No more discussion. All those in favor? Motion's carried.
I got a different conference for C and D.
And on your way out, let our other counselor come in. Thank you.
D and B. Yes.
Next item is zoning amendment by law number 2148 for vacation rental of 1443rd Street. And Mr. Schracken, you have a presentation for us.
With your worship, as noted, it is a vacation rental on 3rd Street. The applicant has three bedrooms in the home that they propose for vacation rental, and three parking spots available off the rear, as Justice proposed. Thank you, Your Worship.
Your Worship, offering forward that the application to rezonate Lot 10, Block 30, Section 27, Township 23, Range 2, west of the 6th Meridian, Coopney District Plan 636D, 424, Third Street East, from R2 low-density residential district to R2V low-density residential vacation rental district be approved.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. And there's a discussion on the motion. I guess the comment that I'd like to make, and I'm okay with moving this thing forward to public hearing, but I am concerned with, when we have these small lots that, and we require three off-street parking, that it can actually be provided, and can be provided comfortably and reasonably, because that is, in my mind, a big area of concern for a lot of people, is off-street parking or on-street parking. And so I just throw that out there right now, that's one of the things that I'll be looking at when we go to public hearing on this. Any more comments on the motion? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
I'll bring forward, Your Worship, that zoning by law number 2148 be read a first and second time, and staff be directed to schedule a public hearing.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Next item is zoning amendment by law number 249 for Mary Hansen Place. Anybody like to, Mr. Schracken, you have a presentation, sorry.
And very briefly, Your Worship, as noted, 2101 Mary Hansen Place, subject vacation rental is for a three-bedroom vacation rental, with parking provided in front, and two in the garage as well as two in the driveway. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Schracken.
Your Worship, offering forward that the application to rezonate Lot 5, Section 33, Township 23, Range 2, west of the 6th Meridian, Coopney District Plan, 14367, 2101, Mary Hansen Place, from R2 low-density residential district to R2V low-density residential vacation rental district be approved.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Solz. Discussion on the motion. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
And Your Worship, I'll bring forward that zoning by law number 2149 be read a first and second time, and staff be directed to schedule a public hearing.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. Discussion, comments? All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schracken. Engineering, oh yeah. Who would like to be the lead of this from, Mr. Counselor Solz?
Your Worship, offering forward, permission of application Canada Virtual Clean Water and Waste Water Fund for 83% of the eligible project cost for the construction of the new Frontin Wales Lift Station be approved.
And that?
And that the remaining project cost for complete the Frontin Wales Lift Station included in the 2017 pledge capital project.
Motion by Counselor Solz, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Solz.
Your Worship, it looks like a good way to fund our mandatory or needed Wales Lift Station, and so if we get some funding, you know, for this, how we can actually move it.
Counselor Nixon.
This is good, that staff have some shelf-ready projects to move along, and look forward to a good response.
Any other comments, Counselor?
Well, just thank Penny for the workshops, and I'm going to say, chat with her all the way, my free time, as well as my, and there's less work, 83% for the same.
Very good, thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
I'll carry on further. Point number two, the submission of an application to Clean Water and Waste Water Fund for 83% of the eligible project cost for the ill-and-silhouette waterline replacement be approved. And that the remaining project cost for the ill-and-silhouette waterline replacement be included in the 2017 capital project budget.
Motion by Counselor Solz, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Nixon.
Your Worship, when we were down in Victoria, it was really good to hear that there's 17 cent dollars for communities, and that's due to the federal government and the provincial government, putting up the rest. Usually we used to have to come up with 33%, so this is really good news.
Question to Mr. Thomas, is that at one time that we, I know that we had talked about or looked at the possibility of putting a walking bridge in and putting a waterline across, and is it because of the cost of the walking bridge is the reason why it's not being completed? I know that we never, hopefully, would never have to dig it up again, but...
Yeah, Your Worship, the cost of a bridge would be more than double the cost of this waterline, and now you have your structure and a bridge that you have to maintain forever as well. So operating costs of an above-ground waterlock, like a suspended waterline, would be, you know, over its lifespan would be, you know, 100 times the operating maintenance cost of this as well, so.
As long as it doesn't resurface again, that is.
Well, you got a pretty, it's going to be directional through, wow, but...
Any other comments or questions? Motion's on the floor, all in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.
Offering forward, AMM Group, LSP Global Inc., beware of the contract that designs construction supervision of the Baguette Water System, with fees based on a percentage of construction value in accordance with GPPGDC's pledge guidelines for design, and MAM Group's power delays for construction supervision.
Motion by Counselor Solz, seconded by Counselor Nixon. Discussion on the motion. Counselor Nixon.
Your Worship, we need to move the Baguette Water Project along. We only took over the Baguette Water District in October, so this is a company that knows the lay of the land, and can with momentum move this project forward, and I support this.
Well, I have to say, I do have some concerns about directing awarding contracts like this, and I'm concerned. I would rather that we were going out for tender, and I realize that there's all kinds of other implications in that, and I'm not 100% against it, it just, I just wish that we were going out for competitive bids. Counselor Brothers.
I have a light concern, I mean, I understand why we were proceeding this way, or this is before us this way, but do we have some idea on what the cost of this is going to be?
Well, it's a five-minute long project, and going by the chart, it's, I think it's $200,000, Mr. Thomas, for engineering services based on the fees.
And does that make sense in the grand scheme of market?
Well, it's, they're going by a schedule that's set out of fees based on the size of the project, so it's, I don't know if I like using the word a standard thing, but it's similar to what architects do. Mike Schracken say that?
Your Worship, this is a very common way of, way of procuring design services for a project that you don't have all the details upfront. It lessens the, it lessens the chance of having extras and changes during the contract, because you've sort of set it up right up front that it's based on a percentage of the design cost, sorry, the construction cost. In this case, as we know about our, construction cost is, based on the grant amount and the amount that we're borrowing, you know, on behalf of the Baguette residents, and they're going to be paying back through the local area service parcel tax, we can, we can work forward with this sort of procurement. So it's something, I totally understand that you're concerned with direct award. I would recommend going, if we were going to go out for a competitive procurement, that we'd use this same method of procurement, which would end up not being about cost in the end, because everyone would effectively be using the same APC tags.
Right, the price wouldn't change, but, so the, and I guess that's why I'm partly okay with it, even though I have reservations, and I don't want this to be the norm for us doing things, I can see the reason for it. But going with your option two, which is going out, it won't change the fee, because it's based on construction costs.
It would be very unlikely that the fee would be, you know, any different.
So the only way that we would get a competitive bid on fees is that if we had a lot more design work and detail done, where we actually had a more defined project of what it was, the end result was going to be, which we don't have.
And Your Worship, some of the challenges that we face, we know that the Baguette community isn't 100% on board with building a reservoir, for instance. So to put that, to put the design and construction of a reservoir into a contract, and then pull it out, if we ended up changing how we would be to use those funds, I think that that ends up being contractually an issue, whereas with MAM, they know, they know where the Baguette community's at. They've been at all the public meetings, they've stepped through this project with us the whole way, so they're aware of what those, you know, community challenges and So they're aware of what those, you know, community challenges and what the community consultation will have to look like, and, you know, the discussions with council so that we can make the best decisions for the community.
Counselor Brothers?
If there's a cost overrun, I mean, you say it's a $5 million project. If it ends up being $5 million, $5.5, does the fee go up or is it...
Yeah, it's based on construction.
Okay.
And if I remember the numbers right, we're actually talking about 5.7 to 5.9 million dollars total is what we've gone for approval for, for grant and the public, the process is, so... But right now, we're saying it's five, it's even around the $5 million range, and that number won't be defined until we get into more detailed design and everything else. And then there's the question about the reservoir, which is gonna hugely change that figure. So I guess for myself, is that I am gonna go in favor of it, I'm just concerned that I don't want this to be the norm, I can see reasoning behind it, but... Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Motion's carried.
Your worship, I'll bring forward item G, that a grant made of $32 be awarded to Revelstoke Safe Space Society for the rental fee, for the McPherson Room, for their AGM, and that such credit has no cash value.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. You know, I'm sorry, I'm concerned. You're just spending $5 million, $32 expenditure, like, we just take a collection up around the room and pay for it? All those in favor? Motion's carried. The last thing that I have is that I have been, I have this on, I have Angel at the helipad. I've been working with Fred Beresky and Stephen Huey, and I met with, I doubt I only met with interior health last, last week, I think it was, and the week before. And this project's going ahead, there's maybe an opportunity we can apply for some other funding areas. And I brought this here because I'm looking to council to authorize me to write a letter of support for the helipad project. And I think that my attitude is that the type of community we live in, the environment that we live in with that country, folks, logging, trans-Canada highway, resort, there's all kinds of opportunities for serious accidents, and there's also lots of opportunities for modes of transportation to be closed and not be able to get people out of here in serious medical situations. That's why I'm supporting helipad and encouraging council to make a motion that we write a letter of support and support this project. Counselor Nixon?
I'm senior on the health committee and working in health for a long time in this community. I remember a little boy that had a bike in his, but he had hospital, really hard to have it right there.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. Any other discussion on the motion?
Your worship, just to clarify, your staff wrote you a letter on your behalf and your signature. Letter of support written addressed to who and what in particular?
It'll be to the regional health district, asking them to consider this funding for this project.
Regional hospitals?
Regional hospital district. Any other comments? All in favor? Motion's carried. Moving to communications, is anybody willing to bring up on the finance committee minutes of August night?
Your worship, I have two items from that committee minutes. The committee asked staff to follow up with the Legion, to let the Legion know that council intends to review their request in November, and to ask staff to bring back a report for next council meeting, so we could look at helping the Legion out with their cost and profit.
Okay. Second one?
The second one is the staff pointed out two properties owned by the city, but leased to the Revelstoke Community Housing Society, have been included in the permissive tax exemptions. They will be included in the bylaw for 2017 permissive tax exemptions to ensure the properties do not become taxable when the lease between the city and Revelstoke Community Housing Society is registered on title. And just asking staff if this has happened. Is it registered on title for lease?
Your worship, yes, it was registered on title quite some time.
Okay.
I believe last year. Anything on the development commission minutes of October the 5th? Environmental advisory committee of October the 20th? Enforcement monthly report for September 2016? Social development coordinator reports September and October 2016? Oh, Counselor Windle?
Your worship, yeah, for the social development coordinator reports. These, it was brought to staff's attention to the committee that these reports were not being attached to the social development committee minutes, so they will be from here on in, and it's an opportunity for council and staff to see a little bit more about what's happening with the social development coordinator.
Business license summary of October 2016? Parks and Rec monthly reports for October 2016? Ministry of Community Support and Culture Development letter, December 20?
Your worship, that letter from Minister of Community Support and Culture, who shows the work that we've done for the last two years, right in that letter. I'm very, very pleased to see that. About water for the Baguetti, Thomas Brook, and looking at a bigger plan for Revelstoke, looking with a 25, 30-year lease.
We've been busy.
Yeah, that validates, um, studio.
Thank you. Ministry of Community Support and Culture Development letter of October 20? Questions from media?
None today, your worship? It was all clear as crystal.
Questions?
None.
motion to adjourn? Counselor English, Counselor Windle, all in favor? Motion's carried, thank you.